Okay, it's eight o'clock. Our appointed beginning hour. And Artie Semetis may or may not join us. He normally does want to see emails and I've not had any communication, so he may be here later.
Definitely don't rise if he comes.
A couple of preliminaries. First of all, it's my great pleasure to welcome to the board Jeff Hartzar and Rosemary Herbert, who were appointed by the village on, I think, July 15th, or maybe a couple of days before that. It is just great when we have dedicated, intelligent, and good blood that is willing to serve the village in this capacity. And I'm sure you'll be terrific additions to the zone board. And I and I'm sure everybody up here very much. Thank you very much. Next, preliminarily, the minutes of April 23rd were prepared by Sarah. It circulated, and I think, if I had a comment, it was pretty minor, but I sent it and I don't know there were any others. So I think it's appropriate to move the acceptance of the minutes of April 23rd. Do I have a second? If I can go in favor?
All right.
Thank you. There are two matters on tonight. The order on the agenda is new matters first, continue matters second. So 115 South Broadway, Katherine Daniels, Brady, who will be first.
This is, I'm Kayah Gamm. I am representing Christopher, Brady, and Katherine Daniels for 115 South Broadway. We have gone through the process of the planning board review of a front wall that we would like to put in. And we are currently in front of view to get some area variances that are basically based on the fact that the building is built in the early 1900s, which is why the current stone wall is running effect. It is 19.3 feet dead back from the property line. Thirty feet is the standard for the multifamily section. However, we are in the Broadway zone, so we have to be 50 feet in. And of course, we do not comply.
That would be the middle.
So the house has been doing fine until this point. Several accidents, having cars bringing, you know, the screws into the property and plowing down front landings and also risking the property being damaged, has made us make the decision that we need a wall. There are several walls. The neighbor houses show a panel. There are walls across the street. And we have been very careful in planning this wall to be in very cohesive with what's going on there. So I find this is a matter of course that we are asking for a variance for an existing condition. But we'll leave what your, of course, your opinion of what you have seen, the whole document, I hope, both the renderings in terms of what's going to go up. But mainly, of course, we're asking to get the zoning variance.
Okay. What I'm proposing to do is to put a wall across the front of the property on Broadway.
That's correct.
There's no addition to the house or anything like that?
No additions. There's no changes to the house.
No change in the front porch or?
No. The front porch was rebuilt after another accident a few years back. The side porch was added at the time. It has been repaired recently. There's no changes to the footprint of the house at all, nor to any other areas of impermeable surfaces.
Okay. Now, I mean, I think probably several of us visited the property, certainly all of us driven by it in the last few days, one way or the other. As I recall, there is a wall to the north of the property, also on Broadway.
Yes.
And to the south of the property, there's another wall that is lower.
That's much lower, yes.
How do you plan to accommodate that?
We're planning to not connect them. And we're actually going to have a, the wall itself will be about three feet. We'll raise the pier about five, six inches and also make it a slightly bit wider.
What do you mean by the pier?
Basically, a column that's a little wider than the wall itself. We'll do that on both ends. We'll also do it at the entrance to the front walk. So there will be a gap between the two walls. We're not connecting to the other property's wall.
Now, how does the height of the wall you're proposing compare to the wall of the property to the north?
Maybe 10, 15 inches max indifference.
Which way, which is higher?
Higher. We would be higher.
You would be higher?
Yeah.
And how do you compare to the property to the south?
Oh, they were definitely, definitely much higher.
Okay. They're not necessarily trying to equate to the height of each wall?
You can't equate, because that means you would have to slope it down from north to south. And topography goes the other direction. And it would just not make sense to me, a wedge. So we're creating a completely independent front. And we're making sure that it's not intersection with the property line. There's enough of a gap, not too much, but enough of a gap so that it's a clear delineation.
Okay. And the entrance to the house, the path up to the house, how are you dealing with that?
We're doing the similar thing. We're having the extended piers. There will not be a gate at the moment, but it can be added later.
You'd have to come back.
We have to come back. We never want a gate. So that's the thing, we'll never want a gate. It's going to be easier for postal service and everybody else.
Never say never.
Adam's secretary is running number nine right now.
The gate is in the way, yeah.
Okay. All right. And on the side of the wall near to the house, what are you doing by way of planting?
We're going to have plantings. We are mainly going to use a vegetation that is on the approved Morello, Pennsylvania. And we are trying to get a variegation of that that is a little bit higher or can be set at six to eight feet roughly when it's fully grown. This is a shrub that is native to the northeast. And it handles both salt and rough weather very well.
You're not proposing to do a six to eight foot shrub?
Well, it will grow into about six to eight feet. We can't start at that, because you can't really transplant a shrub of that nature and that size. It will probably start at four to five and grow into that when it's fully grown.
And the lot north of that has plantings.
Well, they have choices to do cypresses, which is much more of an Italian, I mean, it's now done everywhere.
But they're high.
They're tall, they're slender, and...
They're about 10 feet.
Right. Yeah. I, we just think that because the house is facing Broadway, and it is the feature in the front, to put something up that's very tall to disguise, the house is not in keeping with the nature and of the time. Of the time, you would have had flowering shrubs that would be more open, that would be overflowing and cascading. And we're hoping to do that and still get some height so that there's some privacy and so that we can actually get what the middle should be.
With these shrubs, are they solid? Are there going to be spaces between them?
They will grow into a solid, they will grow into a solid bunch. And they are what you call semi evergreens. So in milder winters, they will keep many of the leaves. In harder winters, they will maybe lose more, but they will have some growth. And the webbing of how the branches, I mean, the short branches go, they will still have a very tall net even in this single of the time.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments in the board?
No, you answered the question I had about the height of the wall.
Anyone else?
My only question, I should have asked you this before you started. Do you have the proof of mailings to the neighbors?
Yes, I think we sent all of that.
You gave that to the builders?
We gave that to the builders, yeah.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Okay. So I visited the property, and I think one or more of my colleagues has done that as well. You know, it's like the house has been attacked by cars and storms and everything else. And the front at the moment looks a little irregular, I guess.
Shabbled, yeah. It's been hard.
Pick your words.
To deal with that, yeah.
So I mean, I think this is a reasonable application. The wall itself, the stone wall, will not be a great height. And, you know, this idea of building shrubs, putting in shrubs, it will eventually be six or eight feet tall. We had a matter here maybe a decade ago, maybe longer, which explored the issue of whether putting up trees that were going to create that kind of a barrier meant that those were a wall, which the code prohibited. It was one of the most hotly debated items the board has ever seen. It was a 3-2 vote. And the next door neighbor who was offended by that filed an appeal one day late under the statute period. So it never got resolved by a court. But that is, that is the rule. It's just that, I mean, I would say that to the extent you can prevent what they call the corridor effect, so that you're not creating a corridor along Route 9 there. I mean, there are others that we have approved, which I deeply regret at this point, which do...
We do not wish to have something that varicates the house. We do not like that. And I think that's what we've all wanted to have. We wanted to have something that was a slow growing shrub. We actually would like to have something that doesn't come up more than six feet over time, because we think that the sort of the body of the topography also feels right for the house. And I do agree that this sort of sense of going through Tuscania in an alley is not really what Broadway is about and shouldn't be about. It's open, it has flowers in the spring. We are going to have male and female plants so that they actually will, you know, create the flowers and the fruit. And the fruit is, you know, it's very interactive to birds. So there's a lot of things that we want to keep in mind for the farmhouse style of the property.
And I'm sure you will. So anyway, long-winded explanation of why I moved to approve the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll vote from the left. Rosemary, I'm going to choose. How do you find this?
I would vote to approve.
If she says yes, I say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. You are approved.
Thank you so much.
Please, before somebody changes his or her mind.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Okay, where does the road?
I'm sort of partial to certain maple grove myself. I make the syrup in the spring. I make three gallons a share, around 150 gallons a Saturday.
The only thing I didn't see at the place you're flying on is trees.
There is a landscape class. We do have one.
I have seen it, but I meant when I visited again the other day.
Oh.
You know, I was trying to, it's not a key point. Since you worded up yourself like I was. Okay.
I'm on the landscape.
Now, you were here before.
Yes.
And one time, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so you didn't have to do a move.
So they don't have to do any...
Okay, so you're covering the valley.
Yeah.
Please, go ahead.
On that side, uh...
Can you turn it a little bit? Maybe turn it a little bit, so Rosemary can see it too.
All right. So yes, we're breaking my office. I'm only seeing our office, a gazebo, seeing our market scale. Greg from my office was here, I guess, last month. I presented.
Too much ago, I think.
Too much.
Yeah.
In any event, in the midterm, in the meantime, we had an aerial property company create a picture and a plotting of the structures within the neighborhood of the 200-foot of butters as you have in your notice requirement. So what we found, presented here, is that about 60% of a homes are more than 8% of the allowable coverage on a lot. So basically, I think one of the comments was that our house was quite a large percentage of the allowable coverage. So one of the things we looked at was the coverage of the neighborhood lots. And 80% of the, or 60% of the houses, a little bit more than half, are more than 80% of that lot's coverage. All right?
Our concern, I think, was that you had quoted a couple of data points.
Right.
And we said, let's cut the whole story. What about the other, basically? And, you know, I noticed you had this on here, and there have been other applicants who have done the same thing. It can be that if a house, you know, even if coverage is just barely over allowable, if a house is too bulky and blocks the view of the neighbors or something like that, that's something we consider. But the percent covered by house is not in the statute. And it's an information point.
It's an information point. I'm just trying to go over some of the statistics. Also, 50% of the lots are over coverage. I mean, average over coverage in general is 54%.
Are you just talking about the 200-foot of butters?
Two hundred and butter is.
So just that group of...
Just that group of homes. I think we did add, we did include the next one, which was...
68 root view.
68 root view.
That's 12% of it, that's why you don't have it on there.
Well, no, it's on here. And we did include it in this, the numbers that I'm giving you, all right? It didn't, it shouldn't have been there, and it would have made our numbers a little better. But since it was on there, we included it in what I'm telling you. In these figures, we did not include our property. So the averages of the other properties.
The our property, you mean?
95 root view.
Okay. And the applicant's also on the next door property, right?
Yes. And that is included.
And that is over.
Yeah, and that's also, that's 93 root view. So 90, 93 root view.
So would you still point it?
And is it in keeping, is it in keeping with the other houses that you are including, or is that a particular outlier?
93?
Yeah.
93 is part of our statistical group. 93 is 84% of the house is the total lot coverage. And it's over the maximum allowable by 9%.
So 12% of the lot you're proposing.
Right. We're, so we're proposing a house. So the house coverage, the over of the coverage ranges from 6% to 147%. So 147% is Seven Irving Place, which is the corner line up, connected in the end there.
Right.
All right, and that's 147% over total lot coverage. All right? About 66% of the homes are an average of 84% of the lot coverage by footprint, and they range from 78 to 91%.
So I'm just not following that statistic. Are you saying that the home covers more than 80% of the property?
85% of the lot coverage, allowable coverage.
So you're not saying that the property, that the house covers 80% of the lot?
Right.
You're not saying that?
No.
You're saying it's 80% over the allowable? I'm not in such a...
80% of the allowable coverage, the total allowable coverage. So the allowable coverage consists of the house footprint, walkways, drive, not driveways, walkways, patios, things like that.
So you're saying that they're all, they're all under the allowable? They're 80% of the total?
No, they're over by 80%. No, no, they're 80.
They're under. You're saying if you considered each of these properties, just by the house that's on the property?
Right.
Then they are 86, 85, or whatever.
But it's the, but it's the walkways and the walls that's putting it as...
Putting them over.
Kirmin Place has got a, Kirmin Place has got a pool.
Right, right.
And that's why it's so far over.
Yeah.
I think it's the only pool in the area.
The only pool in the area.
Yeah.
66% of the house have...
And look, you know, as I've already said, this 86% is not that big a deal, but you are, you would be the highest percent covered by a house except for...
No, I don't think so.
Except for two of the properties. You got, I'm just reading your numbers.
Yeah, sorry.
32 root view is 90%. And 36 root view is 91%. Everybody else is smaller than you are.
Well, we got, well, but we're not that far different. One Irving Place is 82%. And so we're slightly...
You brought this statistic up. I'm just saying, I'm not sure.
No, you're right. And 66 is 81%. Now, if you take the average from all of these that are over, it ranges from 81 to 91%. 86% is back in the middle.
By the way, 24 root view is 56. It's not in the middle in the sense it's not the median. It's above the median.
Above the median.
Above the median.
Anyway, I just don't think this argument gets anywhere, I'll tell you that.
It just finds out, you know, from what I understood with the questions from last time, I'm trying to answer those questions.
Can we just back it up just a little bit, because I was actually not here at that meeting? So how much over are you, what is your proposal?
Our proposal is, is that we're asking for a total of coverage of 21% over.
Over, okay.
Right.
All right?
Now, you know, there's a lot of paper, and you submitted, your folks submitted a good, a good amount of paperwork the last time, and I appreciate what you added this time. Thank you for the extra work. What I, what I don't see, and what I would not have been able to understand, except for the fact that the owners of the property next door, who were also applying for this, came by to see who it was who was walking from the property, perfectly understandable, and they explained some of it. I think it would help the board if you actually went through comparing the house as it is now and what you're going to do with it.
So the house as it is now...
And if there's a particular page for us to look at, that would be helpful. What's your sheet number?
Three of six.
Okay, thank you.
This is the existing footprint and the proposed footprint.
Okay?
All right? This is the proposed, all right? Now, as far as existing coverage, our existing, our existing house is 2185 square feet. Our proposed house is 2708, so that's 500, meaning something 200, 250, 200 square feet more. Our overall coverage, our existing coverage is 2712, and our proposed coverage is 2800. So we're only adding 87 square feet of additional coverage over. So we're making the house larger, but we're reducing other things. We're reducing, in one place, patios, those have lights. We actually have just a rear stew in the back we get from the dining room.
To the backyard.
To the backyard, yeah.
Okay.
So we're only adding about 87 square feet of coverage.
But tell us what you're doing, because the house as it is now is going to look very different with the application.
Right. So the existing house is a one-story, and we're proposing it to go to a two-story. The garage, so we're adding a garage, taking up the, or expanding the garage out to the right, or to the east, and then we're putting a second story on the existing house.
And what are you doing in the front?
Well, as far as the front is, the only thing that we're doing in the front besides the driveway is the landscaping.
You're not changing the front of the house?
Well, look at it, but not the, but not the...
It's the same footprint?
It's the same footprint.
Same footprint, yeah. Okay. It looked like you were building out the front to make, but maybe I'm just misunderstanding. You're going to change the steps in the back. You just mentioned it, going from the dining room to the backyard. What's the change there?
Well, that's just what we showed. The, we just have the steps going, just a platform and a step going down to the yard. It's not a change from what your plans are, it's a change from the planning board, or the planning board required us to remove our patio out of the backyard.
Okay. And is that one of the reasons your overall coverage is not increasing that much, because you're taking that out?
Yeah.
Okay. What are you doing to the driveway?
Well, driveway, we're, we're expanding it to a, to a full width of the garage and doing a little turnout so that we don't have to back out the other street.
Compare it for me to the existing driveway.
The existing driveway is 770 square feet, and the proposed driveway is 1135. So we're missing one square foot increase in that.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, frankly, going through the materials, that struck me as a very material addition. Now, we don't count driveways for the coverage. But, you know, if the coverage were increasing by 10 square feet, which would require you to come in here technically anyway, and you propose to put a driveway all around the house, we'd probably say no to that. Not because of the coverage increase, but just because of the overall impact. So I, well, you need 400 square feet more, because, I'm going to, because it looks to me that that is a two-car driveway, and it would go into a two-car garage.
I think that's generally what we do is, because the driveway isn't all that long, not necessarily a lot of parking on root view, on, for parties and what have you. But we're not, again, we're not the biggest driveway in the neighborhood either. I don't know if that's really not, but we're not, we're, in my view, in keeping with the size of the driveways of a neighborhood, although it doesn't really count as coverage, as you said. We didn't compare the driveways in any of our data, but you can certainly see 24 root view has this big, actually, a circle and a, to, and horseshoe. 25 has a, has a bigger driveway. One Irving Place certainly has a bigger driveway. And I guess even our neighboring property, Homebody Saint People, is bigger as well.
And what's, okay, let me finish with the coverage for a second. So the, the structure itself, I mean, at the moment, you're, you're over by 18%, right?
Correct.
And you're proposing to increase that by another 3%. You're going to increase the structure, as you said, by, I think it's 523 square feet. So that's the coverage imposed by the structure. And the patio, you're reducing from 485 to 60. That's your major reduction.
Yes.
That's how you get the net under 100. Is that right? Okay.
Can you just point out where you're reducing?
Um...
Maybe that, it's not a great picture, but that maybe is what you're doing.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't really show you what's going on in there.
Try three again. Try sheet three. Yeah, that's correct.
So basically, we have a, two walkways that come around, that come around the property, and we're doing away with the, with the front walkway. We have sort of this little cupboard area that is part of the, we're considering part of the house. It's a walkway that is just going to go right onto the driveway. And we're eliminating the side walkway altogether. The only thing we have on the side is a couple air conditioner, pants.
But you're extending the garage over to the right?
To the right.
So I'm still not figuring out what you're, what you're eliminating. The concrete walk is now covered on, and I'm sure that's, that's a hard surface, so...
Well, it's part of that, the covered walk is part of the house coverage.
Right.
The roof, it has columns, that's part of the house.
I get that. I just don't, I can't follow the reduction.
So we're removing 300...
Your numbers say 425 feet of patio. Where's that?
Yeah.
There you're removing.
And I think it has to do with the, I don't know if you have this, but it's 304 on the, on the back, and then 128 on the, on the walkway to the front door. That comes down to 432.
Show us on the map, please, where those are.
The walkway is here, and a walkway here. And we're eliminating that whole thing. We still have the covered stone patio, is the same covered stone patio. And then we have the three air conditioning there, but we're eliminating this, this area here. And that's, that's over 400 square feet going 432.
Okay.
So again, I'm slow today, so you've got to just bear with me. But you're putting the garage where the walkway is to the right.
To the right.
So that's not an elimination. I guess you're covering that area. And you're putting a covering, the covered walkway over the concrete walk, so that's not elimination either.
Well, the way it's calculated, it's, so we're increasing, we are increasing our overall coverage by 87 square feet. So yes, we are increasing, and we're trading some existing for the garage... So yes, we are increasing and we're trading some existing for the garage in the building.
You're building over where there is covered area now.
Right. So overall, we are increasing our coverage by 87 square feet.
And, and part of what, and I think part of the difficulty or is part of what you describe as eliminating, you're substituting.
Substituting.
The structure is going with the patio or something, the walkway. And so now it's part of that greatly increased structure number.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're taking out the patio at 432 and adding the structure at 535 and that increases our overall coverage by 87.
Amazing.
Got it. Okay. Now, the people next door own this property. What's, what's the plan?
Um, they're living here. They don't, there's no plans to move out of that, that they're, they're.
My sister works at the school.
I'm sorry, you've got to give your name to the secretary.
Okay, Eddie Holly. So my sister works at the school. She just got married, so the initial plan is that she, they move into the house as a matter of.
Okay. This is not a lie conspiracy to.
So now, yeah, that's, that's, she really did get married on the third inside. I don't know if it was.
And you're okay with her living next door?
Is she okay with living next door? I would surrender my daughter to living next door. That didn't work out at all. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, yes, you're right. I mean, that could change tomorrow or next week or, you know.
That's.
I know how the board's thinking, but does it doesn't impact.
Okay. At least at the moment, you're representing that this is not going to be reconstructed foot. It's going to be owned by the family next door and used by the family next door. That's the plan?
That's the plan.
And you're telling us that?
Yeah, as of now, yeah.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Good. I mean, this, this is a little more complicated probably than it needs to be because the plus and the minus numbers are pretty high and they overlap in various areas. But the fact is, you're over now by 18%. If you simply came in with a house that was now compliant and proposed to create a house that was over by 21%, that would give at least me a good bit more of a problem. But the net of this is that you're going to be adding 3% of coverage and once you understand, much I understand at least what you're proposing, it seems to me somewhat reasonable. But that's just me. Any comments or questions from other members?
Well, I think I agree with you. It's, it's a bit of a close call because if you look at these, these data, a lot more houses in the, in the, you know, within the, the, the butters are under, two or three are, are more over than, than this big. But I guess on balance, although it's a close call, I guess I'm okay with it.
I mean, adding to that problem, the properties on Riverview Road that are the same size as you are are all going to be over than you are, except for one.
There are very few lots that actually conform to the minimum lots on as well.
Yeah. You're dealing with undersized properties.
It's an undersized property for that.
Well, if we were in a smaller zone, we wouldn't have the same problem.
How will the height of your, your new building compare to the homes next door? On, on both sides?
Compared to your, to the house on the right, it's going to be similar height.
Be similar.
All these houses are two-story houses. So they're all two, all of the houses are two-story. This is the only house that's one-story right now.
Okay. But, but how, I mean, will it be higher than the houses next door? That, that house seems to me to be closer to the property line than, for example, his house, the house next door.
Certainly, it'll be closer to the street.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily close to the property line.
Closer to the street, so more imposing on the street.
Yeah, well, that's the only house that's, these other houses, this is the same, similar or even closer to the, to the street.
How, how much height are you adding? And what are you doing in terms of the roof?
Well, I think you have an architectural plan. I didn't bring the architectural plan here.
On Irving Place here, the, where we're building on top of the existing house, is to pull back the roof line. So we're not going to erate on that line, so.
That goes straight up the side.
No, it's going to be straight up the front of the house. All right, you're set. Can I answer it? Go ahead. Okay. Anyone else, Rosemary? Anything you want to throw at these characters? I'll with you, Chuck.
I mean, I guess the only question would be, if you were to add pathways and stuff at a later date, that would increase the coverage, but that would have to then get.
I, I suggested this to the, the prior applicant. It is for you two in particular to know, we are really deaf on people coming in with an application and then coming back a few months or even a year or two later and adding to it.
Right.
If you, I mean, you would really have to show an extensive reason. There was an earthquake and the house collapsed or something.
Well, right. I mean, we originally, to the planning boards, did show a patio, a reasonable size, a 12-by-12 patio, but they would not let us show that or come to us, come to you with a, or they would, they were actually would give us a negative recommendation if we showed any, any patio.
We've, we've really educated them over the years.
So we, we did show a modest, 12-by-12 patio in the back. You know, we were looking at concerns about the trees and so we notched it around the trees and things so it wouldn't disturb any of the, the name ring property. But in the end, they basically said if we showed patio, well, they give us a negative recommendation. We didn't want that. Whether, whether, I don't know if they gave us a positive or a neutral, but we didn't want negative.
It passes you on to us, which is all it needs to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions and comments? I will move to approve the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
And this time we'll vote from the right. Judge?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you very much. Actually, only five people vote. I heard Judge get into the act the last time. Lou Lustemberger did this for 20 years when we have alternate, I think, try to treat them as, you know, observers. You vote from one side to the other and that way everybody gets into the act, especially if there's more applications. So that's what we did. All right. You're covered and I'll send you a letter within the next day or two. Thanks.
All right.